On the news, you need to know this. Republicans want to hold our economy hostage again.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry to interrupt. Lots of animated conversation tonight. Okay, I'm calling to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Pacifica for February 10th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember DeGruy.
Present.
Mayor Protem Irvin.
Here.
Mayor Nyheart.
Present. Please rise and join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And, city attorney, is there a report from closed session?
No reportable action.
And, I understand that we have an urgency need to add something to our agenda.
That's correct, mayor. And, as you know, we need to make two findings, and the city attorney's going to remind us what those are.
Okay.
So, the first finding is that there is a need to take action prior to the next meeting. And then, the second finding is that the need to take this action came to the attention of staff after the posting of the agenda. So, if we could have either the city manager or the city clerk give us the facts that would support those two findings, then the council will be able to make a motion to make those findings, and then, after that, another motion to add the item to the agenda. And, staff will explain what the item is and what are the facts surrounding the posting, or lack thereof, and the need to take action before the next meeting.
So, staff.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. It came to my attention today that the proclamation for the Sports Hall of Fame needed to be under special presentation. So, in an effort to accommodate the Sports Hall of Fame event, we would like to add that to the agenda.
So, it came to your attention after the posting of the agenda, and why is there a need to take action before the next meeting?
Because the event takes place before our next council meeting, so then it would be after the fact.
Okay. So, the first thing is, which piece of that?
So, somebody could make a motion that we find that the findings have been made to add this item to the agenda.
Councilmember Stone.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Irvin had her light on, but, all right, that's okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, and that passes five to zero. And, the second piece of that is...
Now, we need a motion to actually put it on the agenda.
Councilmember Stone.
So moved.
Councilmember Irvin.
Second.
Okay. Please vote. Oops. Wait, wait. I made a mistake.
Reset.
Reset. Horace would kill me.
What's going on?
Okay. And that passes five to zero. Sorry, folks, whenever we have to add something, it's one of those things that we need to do officially because it wasn't on the agenda. And that brings us to the consent calendar, and I do want to say that we have had a request, actually, I've had a couple of requests, to pull item number 12 and put it under consideration, particularly for information and clarification. If...so, that's, we'll put it at the end of consideration. Okay? And, pass that. Councilmember Stone.
Move approval as amended.
Okay. Councilmember Irvin.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? Okay. All, well, please vote. Forget where I'm at. And that passes five to zero. And, that brings us to the special presentations. And, our first presentation is actually from, oh, Kathy, I should have learned to pronounce your name. Kathy LaVizo, LaVazo, from, did I come close? From the Pacific Gas and Electric Company. Please, oh, and Scott Hart came also. All right.
Hi. Good evening, mayor, and council members and city staff. I'm Kathy LaVazo, and I have Scott Hart also with me, and we're here on behalf of PG&E to recognize the City of Pacifica for your outstanding achievement and ongoing commitment to energy efficiency. So, we have a large ceremonial check in the amount of $120,065, and it's made possible through PG&E and the San Mateo County Energy Watch, which is a partnership between PG&E and CCAG, the City and County Association of Governments. This rebate check is for the installation of a lot of different projects throughout the city: lighting, high-efficiency boiler, variable-frequency drive, a natural gas furnace, and 1,934 LED streetlights. So, addition to the rebate, it, all of these projects saved the city a lot of money. So, by the installation of these projects, you're going to save approximately $82,000 in your annual electric bill and over $8,000 in your annual gas bill. And, you're also going to be removing 193,000 pounds of greenhouse gas emissions from the environment. And you might wonder, what does that equate to? That equates to taking 31 homes off of the grid, or taking 18 cars off the road, which is a huge accomplishment. And, as you can imagine, projects like this really take a team approach. And I want to, first of all, acknowledge the mayor and the council, because you've always had a very fine vision of a very mean, green, and clean Pacifica, and we appreciate that. And I also want to recognize the Public Works staff, Man Ocampo and Ray Bijajati, they're both here this evening, and their entire staff. They've worked very diligently in the completion of these projects, and I really want to give them a shout-out. So, I'm very impressed with the city as they continue to be leaders in the county in energy efficiency, and I'm very pleased to be presenting this check tonight, and I'm very much looking forward to continuing to work with you on many other energy efficiency projects. And if you can indulge me and you can all step down here, we'd love to get a picture with the check, if that's okay.
Well, we will, but first of all, I want to let the council say things if they want to. But, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned the work that our staff did, because they did a great job in putting together the program that was going to, because as people may have seen, we replaced a lot of streetlights and lamps and those things, and that wasn't just because they were old. We're doing that for a very environmentally conscious and also financially conscious practice. So, you guys did a great job, and thanks for partnering with us on that.
And, councilmember Irvin.
Just again, thank you very much for your accolades, and again, to the staff, which is, it's a, you know, very respectable achievement, and it's never been more important, as we all know, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So, you know, we'll keep striving to do as much as we possibly can, and we're really grateful to get that check. It's great. Thank you.
Councilmember DeGruy.
Ditto to staff, obviously, very important, and also the community, to see what can happen, save money, get those cars off the road as well.
And, councilmember O'Neill.
I just wanted to reiterate what everybody else said, so I'll be brief. Thanks.
And I'm going to go last, because I'm going to actually ask the staff to join us for the picture, that we're involved in this, as well as our city manager. But, most importantly, I just wanted to say that, you know, it was great to get my PG&E bill last month. It was $18. I went solar. So, I'm sorry.
That's good.
But it was $18, and I was thrilled. It's, it costs a little bit, but when I think about everything that gets back for the environment, I'm sure you don't mind that little piece. I also want to stress the LED lights. For anybody that hasn't used them, I've changed most of the house over, and I'm changing the rest of it. And I have to tell you, given that I am aging, they are so much cleaner to see by, I can't believe it. So, not only if saving money and efficiency in energy, but it's doing more than that. We've got more to do. And last, I want to thank you for Palmetto and the undergrounding and the continued work in that arena, and this is a great project. I love being part of it as the chair, or the vice-chair on CCAG, and I just want to say thank you. Okay? Okay. Thank you again to the staff for all their hard work in making us continually more efficient, and I appreciate those numbers. The next presentation is Brian Greenberg, and Brian is here from Envision Shelter Network and the HOT program, and I'll let you tell us all about that.
So, HOT is the homeless outreach team. It's intended to get your most disenfranchised homeless people into housing off the streets and into care. But we want to start with Chris Hunter, who's the chief of staff for Don Horsley, and on the board of Pacifica Resources Center. Supervisor Horsley was instrumental in securing funding for this project in several communities in San Mateo County, and he's right behind me.
Great. Thank you. Good night, good evening. It's an honor to be here, council and staff. I just wanted to remind people, let people know again about the importance of the HOT team and the county's full support of this project. Back in September, the Board of Supervisors met and discussed how to spend some of the Measure A money that this county has so generously voted to support for a great many, many projects that are crucial to the quality of life. And one of the things that they decided to expand was the HOT program by a value of $300,000 to include the county, the county's coast side, the Happam Bay in Pacifica, because they had been underserved in this, on the corridor, along 101, the HOT team had been working in the cities there to identify and assist some of the more difficult homeless people to help. But as anyone who has ever tried to be helpful to someone, it's just, it's a very, very, very heartbreaking kind of situation. And so, sometimes the professionals of Envision and the professionals who can help people and plug them into the services, it's one thing to be able to pay for those services, it's another thing to be able to have the right people on hand to help the people that need it. And I just wanted to say how proud we are at the county and how proud Supervisor Don Horsley is that we're able to offer this kind of help, that then the staff of Envision and the new member that you're going to meet tonight is able to actually go and do the homeless outreach team aspect with the HOT team. And to have that be a part of Pacifica and a part of Happam Bay and the coast side is a really important move for this project. As you all know, Anita Reese and the Pacifica Resource Center generated a very controversial report last year about the extent of homelessness even in Pacifica, and it surprised a lot of people because of the hidden nature of homelessness in a suburban community instead of an urban community. And I think that this new project and this, the new staffing at Envision will help deal with that problem in Pacifica specifically, and I'm real proud to be here to help promote that and let you all know about it.
Right.
So, councilmembers, mayor, I just want to talk for one minute about the concept of HOT. I want to introduce two people, our outreach workers, Roberto Don Lucas back there, and if you have specific questions about your, the homeless people he's been working with, he can come up. And Bob Stebbins is a physician. If you could raise your hand, he's on the steering committee, basically, the HOT Steering Committee Coast Side. How it works is that law enforcement gives us the list of the two dozen or so most difficult-to-serve homeless people. And the idea is that if you can get the 20% of the homeless population that's causing the most merchant and residential police complaints and the most emergency room visits, if you can get them off the streets and into housing or into care, then it improves not only their lives, but visibly impacts the entire community. So, we don't make up the HOT list. We use local community nonprofits and law enforcement to make up that list, and then we only target homeless individuals and families on that list. And, as you're probably aware, homeless people tend to have a substance abuse problem, some have mental health problems, some are very entrenched in a homeless lifestyle, there's serious alcoholism, as well as illicit drugs in some of the population, and poverty ties it all together. So, we have a lot of, we use, it takes a village approach. There's both a case management committee that meets every month and a steering committee that meets quarterly. We like to have all the nonprofits and stakeholders in the steering committee. Our goal is to get a quarter of the people on the list off the street the first year and 50%, at least half the list, off the street thereafter. And as a homeless person moves off the street, we backfill that with a new person, so it always stays with 20 or 30 people. With that, I'll be quiet, and we can entertain any questions if you have it. Thank you.
I have one, and I just wanted to make sure, I'm sure you do this, but we are so extensively working with homeless veterans at the VA, making sure that that connection is there. I'm assuming you're working with our programs.
So, at our Maple Street Shelter in Redwood City, where we have some coast side residents, it's always a minimum of 26 veterans out of 76 beds. It's also one-third women, coincidentally. And in our 89 homeless units tonight in San Mateo County, we have, of those 89, there are 14 veteran head of household. So, unfortunately, young children and veterans are the two most overrepresented people in the homeless population because of so many single-parent families that are homeless and because veterans face so many challenges. But veterans are number one on our list, and we actually have wonderful resources, VASH vouchers and other things to get veterans off the streets.
And so, you hook them up with resources and things that are available.
We have close to 100% success record because the VA has really stepped to the plate in terms of committing themselves to end homelessness in the next five years or so. There's no excuse for there to be homeless veterans. We have really a rich array of resources to serve them.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone.
Great. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for everything that this program does. It's a fantastic program. I'm glad that you mentioned Supervisor Horsley, and I think Don Horsley's done a great job in helping bring this type of a program to the entire coast side, like you said, and making sure that, you know, getting the publicity and making sure that it's getting out into the community, because that really, I think, will help it go forward. So, thank you to Don and to his chief of staff, Chris Hunter, for all the work that you've done.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Irvin, or Mayor Protem, I should say.
All right. Just want to say thank you for all the work you're doing. I did participate in the One Day Homeless Count that was put on by the Resource Center last year, and it was absolutely eye-opening and very heartbreaking. So, again, I really appreciate all the work that you're doing today. It's vitally important, and I know it's very hard to get many of these people, you know, off the streets and into more safe environments, so it's just wonderful that you've put that effort into doing that here in Pacifica and on the coast. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, councilmember DeGruy.
Also want to add, obviously, to that, but also to the community out there because of your volunteerism to be part of that program. That's why we had a wonderful count, we're able to get that money for the coast. Very appreciative. That means they were up at four in the morning, I believe.
Yeah. The One Day Homeless Count, rain or shine, starts pretty early.
Thank you very much. So, with that, I want to thank you for coming tonight. I want to thank Chris Hunter from council, from councilmember, goodness, everybody's a councilmember, Supervisor Horsley's office, and I want to thank you also for the other part of my work, which is with mental health challenges, because so many people don't realize that the folks, by no fault of their own, end up in situations that are very unfortunate, and it absolutely, thank Supervisor Horsley for his work in our county jail, and you for your work out in the community, and also for the Pacifica Resource Center for working with each of you. Thank you for tonight. Thank you. Okay. And that brings us to the next presentation, which is the one that we added. Sorry, guys, you're last. Dave, Dave, you're last.
Not yet. One more.
One more. You're last. He's not listening to me, but, you know, okay. Horace Hinshaw is here, and we added Horace because the sports, our annual 2014 Sports Hall of Fame, inductees occur at the banquet on the 22nd, and we have proclamations that we need to approve tonight, and also, I will be attending that and handing out certificates and things for the awardees. But, I want to read a little bit to you. So, Horace, for over 50 years, Pacifica has produced many talented athletes in both amateur and professional sports. Since 1991, the sports, the Pacifica Sports Club has honored local sports celebrities by induction into the City of Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame. The council recognizes the Sports Hall of Fame as a lasting tribute to the rich sports history of Pacifica and invites the public to join the Pacifica Sports Club for the 24th anniversary induction ceremony on Saturday, February 22nd, at the Grosvenor Hotel in South San Francisco. I'll comment on why that's there, but not. Four Pacificans will be inducted into the 2014 Sports Hall of Fame. They are Don Delbon, he is Terranova football and baseball coach, Jan Fosberg, who's Skyline College badminton coach, Anthony McCarley, English channel and open water swimmer, impressive, and Dave Williams, Utah State University football and track athlete. These athletes will join the 130 athletes already members of the Hall of Fame. I am happy to proclaim the week of February 16 through February 22nd, 2014, as Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame week, and delighted to present to Horace Hinshaw, president of the sports club, of the Pacifica Sports Club tonight, this proclamation whereby the council recognizes the outstanding contributions of these four Pacificans. Horace, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mary Ann Council. I really appreciate it. Yes, as you may have mentioned, over 50 years of sports in Pacifica, it's really a privilege to honor our athletes over these years. We've had some great athletes go on to professional sports, and Pacifica, a little small town like us, has put several athletes and famous around the world. We've had people play overseas volleyball, basketball, so we really have done a lot for our community. And I just asked you to, if you could put on your agenda for that day to attend the dinner, I think you would enjoy it. We recognize four or five athletes every year. Next year, we're looking for a 25th. I think that's going to be sort of like a milestone for us. I will comment on your comment about moving to the Grosvenor Hotel, however.
Please do.
We have outgrown Pacifica, unfortunately, and sometimes we've had over 200 people, and there's no place in Pacifica. If I'm listening, that we can put 200 people in at a dinner. Unfortunately, that's happening here, but there's no place here. Until we get a hotel that's big enough to put a big conference center, we're not going to be able to have 200 people. So, I appreciate that, and once again, I'll see you.
And I'm going to hold my fingers crossed for that.
Yes. I keep holding my finger crossed every year. So, thank you very much, and I'll see you folks at February 22nd. Thanks again. And thank you, Lori. Thank you very much.
Wait, wait, Horace. I think we have a couple councilmembers that want to...councilmember DeGruy.
Just another added plus with that event is if you like to know the history of Pacifica or celebrate the history of Pacifica, it's very enriching to know and learn from the people that actually lived at the time or their memories. It's really quite a night.
Yeah, it is quite. You really learn a lot about Pacific itself. Thank you.
That's great. I will see you at the event, and I'm not sure...
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks as well, and last year, I did attend the event, and it just brought back so many wonderful memories and seeing so many familiar faces, and it means so much to both the people that are honored, as well as the people that are there to honor them, because some of these people meant so much to some of their students and their colleagues, and again, I think it's just such a wonderful way to honor these people, and I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you'd pass that down. Horace, I have my card for you. I'm just passing it down, you know, you're here. You know, I can't even take a free dinner, so, thanks, Horace. I'm paying for it. With that, we now have, yes, times two, Dave Grom and Man Ocampo need to come up, because we asked for a bit of a presentation on smart water use in city operations, just a little update about what's going on in terms of this drought, which is interesting. As soon as we started talking about it, we got rain.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight are two of your favorite directors. We're here to give you an update on what our respective departments are doing to conserve a precious resource, water. I'll first go through what the Public Works Department is doing, and then I'll turn over the mic to Dave, so he can also give you a rundown of what his department is doing as well. As you all know, California is experiencing extreme dry winter, and although we welcome the rains that we've been getting this past week and a half, the totals are still not up there. According to Esopgate this afternoon, so far, we have received only 5.6 inches of rain this season, while the average rainfall is somewhere around 15.1 inches. We are more than halfway through the season, so most likely, we will not make the average. Last January 17, Governor Brown made an appeal for voluntary water conservation, and in response to his appeal, Public Works has implemented the following short-term water conservation efforts. We have adjusted all of our timers on our sprinkler systems to reduce the duration of watering of all our ballparks and park lawns, as well as landscaping. Our sprinklers are set to provide just enough water for the grass and the plants to survive. We also closely monitor the weather reports, and we turn off all sprinklers in anticipation of any rain. All staff, especially our buildings, building maintenance specialists and rangers, were reminded to pay extra attention to any malfunctioning showers, toilets, and sprinkler systems. We also have reached out to our partners, the Water District, and offered to make our office counters available to distribute their water conservation kit. If you would recall, the general manager for Water District was here, so what we did was, we immediately called their office, and they were gracious enough to give us their kits, so anybody had the counter, we'd distribute them for their use. For Public Works' long-term water conservation efforts, DPW continued to recycle, I mean, to use recycled water for our ballpark at Fairway. With our partner committee, the Beautification Advisory Committee, we plant drought-tolerant plants and installed drip irrigation in all of our landscaping projects. We deliver recycled water to the Grace McCarthy Vista Point, where the Rotary has installed an improvised drip irrigation system using, you know, the Sterilite containers with that term.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dave Grom. I'm the director of wastewater. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dave Grom, I'm the Director of Wastewater. What wastewater is doing to conserve water. The City of Pacifica, North Coast County Water District, are in a joint contract to produce and distribute recycled water. The wastewater department produces the recycled water while North Coast County Water District distributes it to the end user. It is North Coast County Water District that owns and operates the recycled water system. The current users are Ingrid B. Lacy Middle School and Fairway Park Ballfields. This program went into operation on June 10, 2013, and has distributed 2,478,000 gallons to date. It is anticipated that Sharp Park Golf Course, which is owned by San Francisco, will be the big user of this recycled water. It is, North Coast County Water District and San Francisco PUC are hoping to have it online this spring. What we're doing at the treatment plant to conserve water. The Clara Creek Water Recycling Plant was designed to use treated effluent for the plant's processed water, mixing chemicals, washing down tanks, and irrigation. We have two recycled water systems at the plant. There's a utility water system and irrigation water system. We use about 250,000 gallons of utility water per day, and we also use about 7,000 gallons for irrigation water. If we didn't use our recycled water, we would be using freshwater, so we're virtually saving approximately 260,000 gallons a day. All the treatment plant, potable water, at the treatment plant, the potable water is only used in the kitchens, bathrooms, and lavatory. The plant is equipped with low-flow faucets and toilets.
Good. Van?
Madam Mayor, if I could make an announcement. If anyone is interested in finding out more about the drought situation in California, how it affects us, what has been done, what we're doing, and what could be done, there's a briefing that will be held in Sacramento this coming Valentine's Day, February 14, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. This briefing is free to the public, all you have to do is register. You can also view the briefing online by live streaming, but you have to register to receive the instructions on how to connect to the Internet for that. We have printed a few of the flyers at the back for anybody who's interested to, you know, pick it up. And finally, I do want to acknowledge Mayor Pro Temp, Karen Irvin, she's the one that provided us with this information to be announced today, or tonight.
Very good. And I'm going to take questions. I just wanted to be clear, we're on a voluntary 20% reduction right now, but that we'll hear in April if it's a mandatory 20%. So the more we get used to doing it now, the easier it'll be later. Any questions from anyone on Council? Van, thank you so much for coming up with that. Councilmember Urban.
Just was going to say, thank you for all the conservation efforts, they've been obviously incredibly important right now, and I appreciate everything that you're both doing, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, I want to thank you also, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you, the City Manager, who I asked to have staff, sort of, you guys are the perfect ones to do it, so I appreciate that. I also think that the public and the constant awareness for the public will be an additional benefit, so time to use those low-flow oil and turn off the faucets and showers. Yep, we got to go back to, and we need to. Thank you very much. There are no public hearings tonight, and it brings us to Council Communications, but before I turn it over to the Council, I just wanted to make a comment. We're going to, we're kind of changing the agenda just a little teeny bit, some things in the agenda, and I asked our City Clerk to box it, because otherwise, even I miss it, but I will be trying to remember to read for you, although some of you know to get comments to us about any items on consent ahead of time, or you can ask any. I want to remind you that there's a statement now in your agenda that persons wishing to address the Council on any consent item may do so, and each speaker is still allotted the three minutes, and those wishing to address them on an item should submit the speaker cards, et cetera, and we would pull them if there's a Councilmember that wants to. So I will be reading that or trying to remember to read that, but as we make little changes to be more user-friendly, open, we will continue to try to advise you and recognize that change takes time. So with that, Council Communications, Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Don't have a lot to report today, we haven't had too many committee meetings. I think my first one will be Economic Development tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m., anyone that's interested. But I did want to mention this public information meeting about Highway 1 San Pedro Creek Bridge replacement widening project that's going to be happening. That's on February 19, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Pacifica Community Center. As many people know, there's a project going on to rehab the bridge there, and there's going to be traffic detour and other things, so if you do use that, it might be very important to learn about what's going on there. And I did want to ask staff quickly, has our, have our neighbors to the south been notified at this meeting at all, and is that possible that we might be able to just connect with the coast and Half Moon Bay, because a lot of the people from the south will be affected in that area, and you might get a lot of calls preempted, so.
Happy to reach out to the City Manager in Half Moon Bay and ask them to get the word out to the residents.
And the Midcoast Council.
Right, I'll take care of that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Councilmember Urban.
Okay, I attended with the rest of the Council a joint study session with the GG NRA Open Space Committee regarding the dog management study, and we'll be discussing the outcome of that this evening. I've also went to a movie that was along with Mayor Nyheart regarding sea level rise. It was called Shored Up, and it was presented by the Pacifica Environmental Family, just very educational and informative, and I encourage many of you to look into these issues in the coming months and years to come. But I know Dave Pine will be speaking at the Pacifica Democrats Club on Saturday regarding this issue as well. I also went to the Chamber Event, which was a wonderful event honoring the many businesses and individuals in Pacifica and all the amazing work that they've done, and it just exemplified how incredible this community really is when we work together and we get amazing things done, and it was a wonderful event to be part of, and that's about it. Thank you.
Councilmember DeGruy.
Yeah, before I forget, I think if we could have a work requisition for that light over the speakers podium.
Yeah, good point.
It's difficult to, haven't been able to see.
LED.
Thank you, yeah. Just wondering why, couldn't see too well, because I actually see the audience better than usual. Yeah, ditto on the Economic Development, that's at 6:00 at the Police Department Conference Room tomorrow, and a lot of talk has been going on about sea level rising, very happy to hear that, because there will probably be dollars available as well, and the Bayside is extremely concerned about sea level rising, and I'm happy to be hearing more about the ocean side, too, so I hope you can go to the presentation at, and you don't have to be a Democrat to attend, it's at the Sharp Park Golf Course on Saturday. I also attended the State of the Valley Annual Meeting, which is held in Santa Clara. Some of the, there were quite a few speakers, I had to leave for another meeting part of it, but the key concerns were the price of housing, education, and 21st Century Intelligent Infrastructure, which kind of brought that up before, and it's very important issues, and they were, we are doing economically really well in this area, however, these three items were stressed as being potentially could undermine everything if corporations just decide to get up and leave, so that was pretty sobering. Okay, thanks.
And Councilmember O'Neill.
I had dinner with Karen Irvin and other Councilmembers several times in the past two weeks, but today I did attend the JPA for the libraries, and they are beginning their strategic plan, it's going to be for the next six years, so I don't know exactly how we're going to fit into that, but I'm just kind of giving everybody a heads up.
Okay, well, by the time it gets to the mayor, we've talked about all the issues, but that's, that's okay, I've still got a couple more. Yeah, I know. I'm glad you brought up the Highway 1 meeting. I want to stress to folks that while it may be an inconvenience on the bridge and through the construction project, that is, we should keep our eye on flood control in the front of Lindemar and why we're doing that, because we needed to widen that and raise the bridge to the 100-year flood level, and I really appreciate our Director of Public Works' persistence in getting the issues worked out around that and moving that forward, so I encourage public to come and attend, and I'm glad we're reaching out to our neighbors about that. I also wanted to, did you mention the Beautification Task Force?
She forgot.
She forgot, that was her first meeting on the Beautification Task Force, and some of you probably have seen, if you haven't already, that the first item, in fact, we got a call or something about the planting in the first median on Lindemar Boulevard, the second, third, and fourth will come along. The first one, if you haven't noticed already, was done by, or funded, and done through volunteer work with, of course, our employees, but North Coast County Water, and so we really are appreciated, appreciative of that district and the good plantings and the drought-tolerant, drought-resistant, and I can't stress enough that that is a great committee that is just going after it, Jenny Jaquith, Dave Martinez, I'm forgetting, Mike Mooney, but Wendy Santiago, and I'm going to, Florentina. I'm going to miss somebody, I knew I would. I should never start naming names, but they are absolutely awesome, and you'll be hearing more from them, because the second and third and fourth median strip are moving forward very quickly. I also wanted to underscore, Shored Up was an incredible movie, and I really was appreciative of the environmental communities, the environmental family, for bringing that forward. The interesting thing is, the whole time I was watching it, I was thinking of your year as mayor and my first full year on Council, when we were, I was Mayor Pro Temp, I guess it was my second year on Council, when we were losing cliffs by the feet, if some of you recall. So Councilmember DeGruy, you would have appreciated it, but I also was very struck, the East Coast does this thing called groaning that changes the sand and changes the beach and changes a lot of things, and we do riprap, and it's been a thing that I've been working on for some time, because how, you know, you talk about planning, but we have to talk about what is already here. We're sitting here with 25 feet of concrete under this promenade, and we forget about that, that armamentation's already here. So for some time, ever since those rains that year, and you may remember this, Councilmember DeGruy, the Army Corps of Engineer has planning money available for working on coastal erosion and looking at mapping out what can be done with existing and not, and I know that there has been some use and some attempts, but Friday night Supervisor Horsley and Supervisor Pine talked about having sea level rise on the coast, and we had been talking, we being some of the folks on the coast themselves, talking about sea level rise and the issues of erosion on the coast. So we've decided to join forces, and I'm working now with Supervisor Pine, and there'll be more, because we will probably be having a meeting in the early part of June, or I mean, May, depending on when, when we can get a venue and those sorts of things, but I've started the process of working on lining up the speakers and the issues to bring that forward, so we're very much interested in that. And along those same lines, the study session on the Climate Action Plan is coming up March 5th, or 7th?
5th.
We needed to bring that forward again, I brought that to the City Manager, and I would encourage the Council to look specifically at the recommendations in the report, we're going to get an update on, we've done a number of things, not just the green building ordinance, but a number of items, so we will be looking at what else needs to be done, but as you've seen tonight, we're making headway all the time. And last but not least, I wanted to thank everybody at the Chamber for the awards, it was an amazing event, and the awardees, and those folks who contribute so much to our community, they deserve our thanks as well, and it was an honor to be there with Assemblyman Mullen, and all the Council was there, even our Chief of Police, Jim Tassa showed up, so it was a very, very good evening, and the Beach Coalition was honored, which really is in keeping with exactly the theme here of my announcements. With that, I have nothing else unless anybody else wants to add something? Okay.
Can you repeat when that is, the meeting about the creek?
The meeting about the creek and the bridge is Highway 1 meeting, it's from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. on?
19th.
The 19th, and we're really reaching out to, it's going to impact Pedro Point, the businesses, interestingly enough, are all kind of, I mean, I've heard from most of them looking for the traffic being stopped in front of them.
They like them.
Yeah, well, it's shopping. At least Fresh and Easy and Ace Hardware is in that, that genre, so.
Where's the meeting going to be?
The meeting will be at the Community Center.
That's right.
Yes, okay.
And Mayor Nyheart, may I add one more comment?
You may.
When Councilmembers were speaking about the Economic Development Committee start time of the meeting tomorrow night, they mentioned two different times.
Okay, well, we do that sometimes.
I thought I would just help everybody be clear, it starts at 6:00 p.m., and it's at the police station.
Okay, 6:00 p.m. at the police station for Economic Development, thank you so much. Okay, all right, that brings us to Oral Communications, and we have five cards up here, Teresa Dyer, followed by Roger Medler, and Sue Pemberton. And these are items that are not on the agenda, and there's a number of things around them in your book.
Good evening, Teresa Dyer, 1408 Crespe Drive. I'm just commenting on the article that was written about our new City Mayor, I mean, our new City Manager, I'm sorry. So I'd like to comment on it, I think I gave her a copy of it that never got in the Tribune, but I just wanted to go over some highlights with you. Well, I agree with you, Lori, that women are better listeners and more empathetic and pay attention to interpersonal relations when met. I'm happy to know that your strength is in communication and hope that you can articulate this to our City Council and our city staff. I am also looking forward to our 2012-14 budget story based on community connections. However, I do disagree with the spending of $5 million on consultants in the last five years, because they lack expertise, our employees, and why do they lack expertise? We should make sure that our city employees have the knowledge to do the job. So they also, you also commented about we can't afford an economic developer, and, but we did spend a lot of money on a survey or a report on the economic development, which could have been, come right out of the Chamber Commerce Directory, all the figures and everything, and Victor Spano, who was an economic development or is an economic developer for Daly City, was the chairperson of that committee, so if we're working with volunteers and the whole community connected, then we should, should have used his services and expertise on some of these things. should have used his services and expertise on some of these things. I'm happy that one of your priorities was in establishing libraries in Walnut Creek and Saratoga through grants, even though it took us 20 years to get where we are, and there's still no development in this building here. So I'm wondering if it's going to take us another 20 years to get a library put in or any kind of development in this area. So I'm looking forward to your well-designed plan for Pacifica, and I'm anxiously awaiting when it will be done. Thank you. And just one other item. I did put a public request in regarding a lawsuit that had to do with our unilateral sewers. And I was told that it has to be written to one of you city council members to address from the city attorney. And that's not correct because I go to the county supervisors' meetings and put a lot of public requests, and they all come from the county council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Teresa, you're out of time. We'll respond.
Okay. Thank you.
Roger Medler, followed by Sue Pemberton and Anita Reese.
Hi, I'm Roger Medler, adjacent neighbor to Seaview Tire and Brake. I would like to meet with Mrs. Tindfoe. Yes, I was here in February, but the business of Seaview Tire and Brake's attorney told me I couldn't, I'm making unfound claims and repeatedly contacting city officials, and if I don't stop, they will take appropriate legal action. Well, my attorney says that is not true, and he'd love to have them do that. And I've put in two letters for a request, and I received nothing, a certificate of occupancy, a fire lane, or zoning. And I talked to Pete, he was a mayor, Pete D. Jarnett. He said the business doesn't have no permits. I have scheduled an appointment with you with a letter and a phone call, and I've received no reply yet. So I sent this morning, I sent it, I got a reply from Kathy, and she, it was just another runaround letter. And I sent a certified letter this morning, and you should get it within the next couple of days, and I'd like to meet with you. And I've gone to Joe Ginsburg of California Coastal Commission. She says, wants nothing to do with this issue. She leaves it up to Pacifica. Gene Mullen says you should help me. Richard Gordon says it's not in his jurisdiction. It is in his jurisdiction. And if you want to praise Don Horsley, I went to him and Chris Hunter, and they did absolutely nothing for me. They said I have to go to the city to file my complaint. So they want you to turn yourself in. So I don't think that's going to happen. And they gave me a business license and an environmental permit for, to show a legal proof of a business. So and then I went to Kevin Mullins. He says, please quit contacting me. I don't want you around anymore. Get away from me. So I think that is pretty much an insult. I have been threatened of the business of one of these days and intimidated with two vehicles called Queer and Faggot, and while in my yard, knowing that if I go over to their yard, I'm in violation of the mediation agreement. And if you care to take your car there, I would get the umbrella package if I were you. And, you know, my letters are, it's not my favorite pastime, coming here and writing letters to the city of George White. I've wrote a letter after a letter. I've gotten nothing, no response from him. I don't expect to get a response, but I'd like to see some action being taken. And you are here to serve the public. And Calhoun, I am part of the public. And I would like to thank Teresa Dyer for all her help. She's been more help to the city council, or the city of Pacifica than anybody here on the city council. As far as the homeless, you can put the homeless on the city council as far as I'm concerned. They're very pleasant people to talk to. Thank you very much.
Sue Pemberton, followed by Anita Reese, followed by Todd Slessinger.
I was hoping to comment during the fireworks portion of the council meeting. I think I mentioned in there that it's fireworks.
I got you in the wrong pile. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Oh, my. Is it Anita? Yes, Anita, followed by Todd Slessinger.
I just wanted to remind you all that we're doing our tax services this year again. They are going on Wednesdays from 3:00 to 7:00, and Saturday, March 8th and April 12th from 10:00 to 2:00. We've also expanded our emergency savings pilot to include a match to folks who are saving part of their refund. We can match up to $300 for folks who get their taxes repaired at the Resource Center and live in Pacifica. This is over the course of a year, so we really want to encourage folks not just to save, but to keep the money saved. And if they save $300, we'll match it another 300, so in a year they could potentially have $600 to use for whatever they need. These spots are limited to about 20, so, so far we have about six folks committed to the program, so we're really excited about hopefully filling those slots as quickly as possible. So if anybody's interested to give us a call and schedule an appointment as soon as possible. To qualify for our tax services and the tax matching program, folks have to earn under $52,000 a year. We can do taxes for folks who are filing single, head of household, married, and filing jointly, or a qualifying widower. We can't do married filing separately. We can also do small businesses with, for folks who don't have a loss, and up to $5,000 in expenses, and they can't have any inventory. So it's a pretty basic small business tax preparation. And then we can also do itemized deductions. So we've actually expanded what we can do, more folks on, more of our volunteers can do more things now. So if you know anybody who needs their taxes prepared for free, or if you need your taxes prepared for free, we can do it at the office. Our number is 650-738-7470. Then give us a call to schedule an appointment. Thanks.
Thank you. Todd Slessinger. That's the last card I have for orals.
Yeah. Good evening, Todd Slessinger, Lindemar. Hey to all my friends and family out there and all my fans. Look, this lighting sucks, but it's me. Really? What are you guys trying to do here? Censor me some more? Okay. I wasn't going to do this, but a big shout out to Roger and Teresa. Listen, this city listens to every piece of BS that comes through here. And I've seen it. I've lived here for 27 years. You've entertained agendas that don't remotely relate to your job because it's political posturing and because it's good for you. So you do what Roger Medler wants. You should. That's your obligation. Ignoring him is not okay. I'm serious. It's not. I'll be up here ranting and raving the rest of the year and twice on Sunday. Now, to this article by Jane Northrup in the paper about economic development tops the list a city council wishes. What, what is this? New economic development? That's 20 years old, people. Complete Palmetto Avenue, old news. Come on, people. You got nothing new here. This is a bunch of old, generic crap that every politician in the state and every politician in the country is spouting. We want results. We want specifics. We don't want generic crap. How about this one? Oh, street repaving. Are you kidding? I mean, come on, people. Now, last but not least, free speech. You guys like free speech? I fought for free speech in the 60s, so you guys can come up here and say whatever you want. But you know what happened to free speech? It's like Barry Bonds' home run record. It's got a big asterisk next to it. And if you don't like what I say or anyone else says because you perceive it in your own narrow-mindedness to be not PC, you censor it. That's not free speech. That's not remotely free speech. And you've tried to shut me up in this town for years. And you can't do it? And you never will. It's like the Second Amendment. When Charlton Heston says, you'll take that gun out of my cold, dead hands, you'll shut me up when I'm dead and not before.
So that moves, that closes Oral Communications and moves us to item 14, Under Consideration, A Report on the 2013 July 4th Fireworks Activity and Issues Surrounding the Use of Fireworks in Pacifica. And we have a staff report. I just know it because the chief's coming up here.
Good evening, Mayor Nyheart and council. My name's Jim Tassa, Chief of Police for the City of Pacifica. For the viewers and audience that may not know me, I'll be presenting the staff report to you this evening. During the past year, the city convened a fireworks task force committee that was charged with looking at alternatives for the use of safe and sane fireworks on our beaches. The forming of this task force was the result of environmental concerns about the impact firework debris has had on our beaches, ocean, and community. Their recommendations were presented to the city council at the meeting held on June 10th, 2013. While the city's planning for the 2013 Fourth of July celebration was similar to previous years, there were some significant changes as a result of the implementation of the task force recommendations, which included the following. Only allowing safe and sane fireworks on a defined portion of Lindemar Beach, as well as in two designated parking lot areas. Requiring 16 hours of additional cleanup efforts by the nonprofit groups. And an emphasis, an emphasis to be placed on promoting a community anti-litter message. Because of the short timeframe between the presentation of recommendations by the task force to the council and the Fourth of July, it was determined that the anti-litter campaign would be a focus for the following year in 2014. As in past years, the 2013 event required additional staffing above standard levels by the police, fire, and public works departments to successfully manage the Fourth of July festivities. This year, the police department augmented their staffing with eight officers from neighboring agencies compared to the previous year when they did not bring in any outside personnel. As a result, the police department costs increased by $6,911.69 in 2013 compared, compared to the previous year. This increase is attributed to the cost of the allied agency staffing. This increased staffing was in response to ongoing concerns with illegal fireworks and managing the recommendations from the fireworks task force committee. Enforcement resulted in 18 citations being issued for illegal firework violations compared to six citations the previous year. Fire department costs increased $6,216.04 compared to the previous year. This increase was due directly to staffing with one additional firefighter added to each engine and company for a total of four, and an additional fire inspector and two battalion chiefs. The Department of Public Work costs remains consistent compared to the previous year. In total, the city expended $49,719.68 on resources to manage the Fourth of July event. To help offset these additional costs, the city assesses an 8% surcharge safety, on safety fees on fireworks sales that is collected by the fireworks booths. This year, the fees totaled $34,567.44. Overall, this is $15,152.24 less than the costs incurred by the city. Detailed summaries of activities and costs from the directly involved departments, finance, fire, police, and public works, are attached as exhibits to this report. The restriction of the Lindemar Beach area for the use of fireworks did not come without incident. There were fireworks being discharged on restricted areas of the beach, as well as bonfires being burned. An increased emphasis with staffing will be placed on Lindemar Beach in 2014 to address these issues. The cleanup efforts following the Fourth of July were well-supported by the nonprofit groups and received much praise. In addition to responding on the morning after, the groups worked two additional days at Lindemar and Rockaway Beaches in coordination with Public Works and the Pacifica Beach Coalition. This resulted in the nonprofit groups fulfilling their 160 hours of cleanup obligations. It is recognized that the litter and debris from fireworks is not limited to the beach areas, but is spread throughout the community. As we begin focus on 2014 efforts, we will look at broadening our cleanup areas, efforts in other areas of the city. While 2013 was a year of transition with the implementation of fireworks task force committee recommendation, we recognize it would probably not go without incident. The issues that arose will be addressed, as well as the implementation of the anti-litter campaign. The collaborative effort of all the city departments in concert with the nonprofit groups, the Pacifica Beach Coalition, and representatives from TNT and Phantom Fireworks is to be commended as crucial to making the events surrounding the Fourth of July run as smoothly as possible. The fiscal impact to the city, the service fee that was collected, the $34,567 covered approximately 70% of the city, of the total cost to the city of $49,719 expended on staffing for the 2013 festivities. Tonight, we have Chief Ron Myers of the North County Fire Authority is present, Director Van Ocampo, and Ray B. Agini from the Department of Public Works, and Sandra McCollum from the Finance Department, as well as myself, if you have any questions that you would like to ask.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, chief, for that report. And just wanted to ask about the logistics of how the Rangers and the PD will operate together. I think at the last report, I don't think, I can't remember if the Rangers were in operation. They certainly didn't have this much time under their boat. So can you give us a little bit more detail about that?
Yes. The Public Works Department is a great asset on the Fourth of July. They provide a tremendous amount of work for us. And some of the new things that we instituted this year is we made sure, in an effort to combat the litter that's on the beaches, the Public Works emptied all of the barrel trash cans right before dark. So those cans weren't, just put out there in the morning and then weren't emptied to the next day. We made a concerted effort to go in prior to dark and empty all of those cans so that when the festivities begin, usually at dark, we had empty cans there for the, for the community to put the, the trash in. We also had the, an additional DIPSTI dumpster that was brought in that TNT and Phantom helped offset the costs on those. And we increased, I believe it was the two DIPSTI dumpsters to three, to hold the additional trash that, that was collected. Also this year, Public Works went out during the daytime and barricaded the area that we designated as the beach area where fireworks would be allowed. And we did that by courting off that area with the, with the yellow tape as a barrier.
Councilmember Irvin?
Thank you very much for the report.
I mean, Mayor Protam.
That's okay. I was wondering, you said you, you had a relatively high percentage of fireworks-related calls that evening. I was wondering if you had any numbers in terms of how many were associated with illegal fireworks versus the safe and sane fireworks? Were most of those calls related to?
We don't track those specifically when those calls come into dispatch. There's just a, an ordered amount of calls that happen.
Okay.
They usually start peaking about 8:30, just when it starts to get dark, until about 11 o'clock is our peak time. And due to the amount of calls, they're generally reported as loud fireworks in general.
Right.
And then we dispatched the, the staff to those areas in an attempt to determine whether they're legal, illegal. Some of them may get reported as illegal. We would have to manually pool each call and look at what the, the dispatcher has entered into the call to see if it was described as an illegal type or just as fireworks in general.
Okay. Thank you. One other question, in regards to that 70% of your cost is covered by safe and sane fireworks profits. Do you have any idea how much, for instance, if we didn't have safe and sane fireworks and we only had to monitor the illegal fireworks, do you have any insight into what, what kind of police presence you would have to have on the streets that evening? Or is it too difficult to say?
I think initially, the first year would be a year of transition if we were to ban fireworks. The illegal will always be illegal. We would, you know, now, then it would be a matter of the community getting the message that the safe and sane are no longer allowed. I think that first year, we would probably, for the first, most part, staff up, staff up the same because we, we wouldn't know what to expect.
Right.
As the message gate got out, I think that second year, we would probably be able to reduce our staffing levels. That's just a guess, you know, speculation on my part. Because you're still going to have a certain amount of firework calls that you're going to get on the Fourth of July.
Right.
The people that ignite the illegal fireworks, in my opinion, are still going to ignite the illegal fireworks to a certain extent. So hopefully, if we're not focused so much on the safe and sane, we might we might be able to put our efforts more toward the illegal type. But that, you know, again, that's speculation at this point, just trying to look at it logically.
I'm just kind of considering the cost, you know, what we'd be saving or wouldn't be saving. And I had one more question in regards to the cleanup. Is there discussion about, since you're thinking about going out into the neighborhoods to clean up as well as on the beaches, would we need more, would you estimate that we'd need more volunteer hours or just placed in different areas?
Just placing them in different areas. The nonprofit groups have really stepped forward.
Right.
They've agreed to do the additional hours as part of the overall task force committee recommendations. Like I say, they come out on the Fifth of July automatically. That's not included in those hours.
Okay.
So they do a major cleanup on that morning. So what we're looking at now, instead of having, you know, such a large number at the beaches that we could possibly use some of those forces, like in some of the other popular areas in town, maybe up by the promenade.
Right.
You know, Frontierland Park area, if there's, you know, debris up there as a result of the festivities. You know, we would identify those more popular spots, if you will, and try to put resources in those areas to clean up, clean up a little bit more of the community than just the beaches.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember DeGree?
I had a question, I think I'm on page 114, maybe you don't have it. Trouble with these machines. I was trying to see if we had more staff and more calls per service. Is that number because you were more able to answer calls? I was just trying to, it seems a little peculiar that you have more staff and yet you have more problems.
I don't feel that we, you know, the department, the police department, really has a method of controlling the number of calls that come in. This year, there happened to be more calls than the previous year. So the staffing that we built in this year was a direct result of the response from the previous year when many of the members of the community felt there wasn't enough enforcement action, which, as I mentioned earlier, we had six arrests in 2012. This year, with the increased staff, we took that up to 18 arrests. So we basically doubled that, a little bit more than doubled the arrests there. So that's a result of having more people out dealing with the issues.
Yeah, I was just a little puzzled by that. The other thing, we had an increase of staff in all the departments. Was there any change in the participation of the companies, TNT and, what's the other one, Phantom?
In my opinion, TNT and Phantom were very cooperative. They attended the task force committee meetings. They were able to provide us information as needed. They provided additional garbage cans and dumpsters for the event. I've been talking to them as we prepare for the anti-litter message that we want to put together. And they're more than willing to cooperate, to get that message onto the flyers that we put out at the booths. So they've been nothing but cooperative, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neil, before I, some people want to ask more. Nothing?
So basically, the costs aren't covered by the income, correct? The costs we incur are not covered by the 8% safety fee, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, I was kind of like doing calculations. There's all, how do you, okay, we have a social, you mentioned in the report a social host ordinance. In the existing one we have, how many citations, off the top of your head, have been issued for that?
For the alcohol social host ordinance?
Well, it's the social ordinance. I mean, because I know in the report you mentioned, should we establish a social ordinance for fireworks?
The social host ordinance that we have on the books now currently deals basically with excessive noise or a party, if you will, at a residence. So if we respond out to a residence on a noise complaint, and there's a party going on, and we get a subsequent complaint, and it's not, you know, being taken care of by the homeowner, we would then issue the violation. The social ordinance that we're, host ordinance that we're referring to in the report doesn't, is not currently on the books with us. It would be something that we would research, talk with the city manager, the city attorney's office, to make sure that there would be some teeth in it, if you will. And what we would be looking at is the idea of, since a lot of the illegal fireworks, in our opinion, are coming from backyards, people are hiding behind their fences to ignite these illegal fireworks, that an ordinance, as a social host ordinance dealing with fireworks, would allow us potentially to address the homeowner or the renter, the controller of the property, and cite them for the violation without specifically having to see somebody light it and ignite it. That if we identified it was coming from a particular residence, that's all we would have to do, and then we would go after the homeowner.
And then the present social ordinance has like a $1,000 fine, if I remember correctly, correct?
Correct.
So this, you would figure something equal to, or maybe a little bit more for that, and then having the reward also, right?
Well, in regards to the social host ordinance, we would look for something equal to what we currently have, the $1,000. The reward program is a different thought.
But any conviction would be paid for the reward, so it would be neutral for the city, or maybe a little bit extra?
Well, one of the ideas that was brought out during the task force committee was the reward program. And the way that it was presented is that if somebody gave information as to somebody that was lighting illegal fireworks, they were arrested and cited, and they were, fulfilled the fine obligation of the $1,000, that you would take $500 from that thousand and pay the reward with that. And in essence, that would leave a net of $500 for the city then, as the fine.
Thank you.
And I just have one last question before, we've got five cards on this. When the committee met, and the task force met, I mean, did anyone ever talk about this issue of the storm drains? Because we're trying to keep trash out of our storm drains, too. And I'm thinking about the streets, since you mentioned expanding. You know, I'm just curious if there's anything that you think can be done or should be done in that arena?
Personally, I don't specifically have that expertise. I know that there were people on the task force committee that are very concerned with the environmental impacts of the debris going into the ocean. So there is concern about that. I don't know that we specifically, there may have been some conversation about it, but I don't remember specific conversation about storm drains. I think that came up.
Well, expanding into the streets was what made me think about that. Councilmember O'Neil?
I was just going to say, you know, it was on a task force, that was touched upon briefly about who cleans up the streets in the neighborhoods. Most people are good about putting it to the gutter, but I think probably the key, the information campaign for litter should probably include that as part of it.
Yeah.
We're also going to try to go more block parties and stuff like that. So it was briefly mentioned, but I don't think there's any real lengthy discussion.
All right, just questions. Councilmember Urban, actually, or Mayor Protem, I keep forgetting to call you that.
It doesn't make, it does.
Did you have an additional question?
I had one more question, and that was in regards to the parking situation. I remember last year, there were some people that were frustrated. It was a really warm day, and the parking area was shut down during the day. And I was just wondering if there's any thought about if that's a necessity and if there's just a way to inform the public if we are going to continue with that, you know, policy to shut down the parking for the entire day to avoid people getting, being parked there in the evening, and you have to shut down those parking areas.
I think when we designate the two parking areas as an area where we're going to allow the safe and sane to be displayed, those are the two parking lots that you're referring to, I believe, Rockaway, the South Rockaway Surfers Lot, and then the South Lindemar Beach, the pump lot.
Right.
The concern with that is that if we don't shut those down in the morning, then when it comes evening, we're going to be in a position where we may have to tow vehicles. So we're going to have frustration in likelihood on one end or the other. We'll have it during the day because the parking lots are closed, or when we have to tow cars and there's a cost to people, we're going to have frustration then. So, you know, we could probably maybe come up with some ways to deal with that, but I would think you'd have to put staff out there, some type of staff, during the course of that day to pass that message on to the motorists, the people that are using those parking facilities, to let them know what the timeframe is, when they'd have to be out by. So it may be something that's possible. There may be a minimal cost to it. But when we're already over the cost figure, it adds to that cost. So, but there may be something that we can do there if we want to look at that.
Sure.
And last question, councilmember DeGree, and then we'll go to the audience.
You didn't take my note. I don't have any.
Oh, okay, all right. So that, I have five cards. I'm going to open this to the public now. I have Cindy Abbott, followed by Chris Vogel, I assume. This is, oh, there you are. You kind of ran that all together there. Sue Pemberton, now you're here, and Ian Butler, Dennis Rebel. Those are my five. If you can line up and just move right through them, they're good.
It is nice and dark here. I think blood is saving power, too.
It's kind of nightclub-esque.
Very pleasant, I like it. So I'm Cindy Abbott. I was a member of the fireworks task force. And I'm pleased to hear the continued focus on the need to really draw attention to the amount of litter that is created. I think that fireworks have long been, our task as a, the task force was not mandated to talk about where fireworks going to continue or not. It was really about looking at, are there ways that we can contain it and make people more aware of it? We were given that charge with only a few months to put together all of our ideas and recommendations. And so we really didn't have a lot of time to get out there and do an anti-litter campaign. And I know that the chief has been working on that ever since and has already made some movement forward. When we're talking about going out to the city streets in particular, I'd like to, and one of the things we talked about is while the nonprofit organizations are selling the fireworks, I think it's important for the community to be engaged and to be picking up their own litter. I think that's a message that's really important for the city in everything that we do while it's sort of being put on the nonprofit organizations that are selling this. It's us, the citizens, that have control over picking up what we're doing to enjoy our celebration. So I think that's a big part of the messaging campaign, is to take personal responsibility, to pick it up, to leave our beaches as clean as possible. The Rangers were not in place, I don't believe, at the time that we started the program. So that is going to be a plus this year, that there will be people out there that will be able to be talking about it early on and letting people know. And if the parking lot, which was just the south parking lot, is closed again, they'll also be able to make people more aware of that in the weeks prior to that. One of the conversations that we had that was interesting in seeing the financial results is there was some concern about restricting the use of where fireworks could be used. And it was, for the nonprofit organizations, I'd say a positive, that it does not look like that impacted their revenue at all. Because versus last year, overall revenue was up nine and a half percent, and profits for the, the net profits for the nonprofit organizations was up 18%. So we had a lot of conversations about that, trying to make sure that we were supporting the nonprofit organizations. So whittling down the area where they were legal to do does not seem to have impacted that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chris Vogel, followed by Sue Pemberton, Ian Butler.
Good evening. I'm Chris Vogel. I was also a member of the fireworks task force. I was one of two community-at-large members and kind of represented the neighborhoods on the task force. I want to publicly thank Chief Tassa for his work on the task force. He really was kind of, kind of kept us all grounded, and at times, it must have seemed like herding cats. We all had like different viewpoints, and he really kept us on task and focused, and that was great. Thank you very much. We, just throughout the course of our meetings, we kind of necessarily focused kind of on the beach and didn't really take too much time, or much of our time, focusing on the neighborhoods. And so I wanted to talk really quickly on the public record here about a couple of things we didn't focus on that I'd like the public to know. So this year, according to your financial report, which is an exhibit to this, this year, there were $464,000 of fireworks sales. Of that, the group's net profit was $118,000. That's divided 15 ways, through 15 booths. That's a little under $8,000 per group. So the amount of time we're spending here organizing all this, speaking about this, having fireworks task force about this, and, you know, getting hundreds of calls to the police department, we've got to keep in perspective, these are so that our nonprofit groups can earn, on average, $8,000 for seven to 10 days' worth of work in all this. Please keep that in perspective. And so I noticed on this report, there was one group here that made, that sold $13,000 worth of fireworks. They net $771. I mean, is this all worth that? The big seller was a $61,000 sale. They net just over $8,000. Also, you know, I'm glad you spoke about cleanup in the neighborhoods ongoing because, as you know, as council should know, you're going to have to meet, the city's going to have to meet certain targets by 2017 for the wastewater runoff. I think it's the Regional Water Quality Board will have some strict runoff requirements. And I think we got to keep in mind the effect that fireworks lit off in our neighborhoods, on our neighborhood streets, will have on stormwater runoff in the future. Also, I didn't hear mentioned the fact that we did experience a fire related to fireworks in the back of the valley near the park mall. I don't know if that's in the fire department addendum to your report, but we did have a fairly significant fire back there, too, due to fireworks. Thank you.
Okay, Sue Pemberton?
Hello, I was the person that originally brought this issue to the attention of the council. And I was also a part of the task force. And after this last Fourth of July, I took it upon myself to kind of monitor the effect of all the extra cleanups and the extra hours that were paid to this beach area. And unfortunately, I was still able to find lots and lots of fireworks, even beyond the mandated cleanup times, or the cleanups that were mandated, including today. Just for fun, I walked on into the area where the fireworks were, and knowing that the sand deposits on the beach this time of year are pretty deep, I was kind of hoping I wouldn't find any, but it took me five minutes to find one more piece. So during the task force, I didn't feel like, according to Coach Gray, who seemed to be the spokesperson for the nonprofits, I feel, the impression I got was that the nonprofits were comfortable with the amount of hours that they were doing, but they didn't seem like they wanted to do any more. I think they felt it was punitive after that point. So I feel like there's a little less wiggle room for us as far as resources. I think the Beach Coalition does a lot already. And so I don't know what options we have in order to make sure that none of this is still happening. So I would just go back to my original, my original idea when I first came before the council on that is to just consider not having fireworks on the beach at all. Prohibit them all throughout Pacifica. It's a, like I said before, it's a terrible medium to try and clean that things resurface months and months and months, including seven months after. And I just think it's a really difficult problem that I think can be solved pretty easily. And I think from the standpoint of enforcement, it might be a little easier just to close the beach to fireworks. So, thank you.
Ian Butler? Ian Butler, followed by Dennis Ravel.
Hi, yeah, Ian Butler. Well, I love the work Sue's done, but I wouldn't wanna be in an Easter egg hunt with her. She's good at finding stuff. You know, I, people have made a lot of points already about the Safe and Sane fireworks, so I think, you know, we'll let y'all figure that out. But the thing I wanna talk about really is that we did not address really the illegal fireworks that much, and that really wasn't the scope. It was about the litter. Of course, the illegal ones caused a lot of the litter, but I would like to request that we try to really take it up to, you know, version 2.0 for next year, and come up with some things that really do impact the illegal fireworks. One thing I wanna mention is that since we did get 18 people instead of six, I think it's $1,000 each, so that's another 12,000. I don't, I didn't notice that 12,000 in the budgeting for how that worked out, for the money this year compared to previous years, 'cause that's significant. But what I'd like to see us do, first of all, the social host ordinance, I think, gives a really good tool, so we can actually, when you find out where the fireworks are coming from, be able to actually do something about it when you get there. But I think that having the reward really works with that too, 'cause then you really get more information on where to go. So, if you have the combination of the reward, so you get these tips from people that know where the fireworks are, and then when you go there, you have the social host ordinance, I think really we could make an impact on the illegal fireworks. And the way I envision the reward working is it may not even lead to that many actual arrests, but what I think it really does is it creates a great disincentive to people, 'cause right now, the way it works, there's this culture in this town for, people invite their friends over, they shoot off fireworks and show off for each other. But if everybody they invite over is a potential informant that may get $500 for turning them in, and there's a social host ordinance, I really think that it would take a lot of the, you know, the coolness out of doing that. And one more thing I wanted to mention is that I did the research, you know, there'd been talk about a $5,000 fine, and there'd been a sign in San Bruno. I learned what that is, is that the state of California, there's a fine if you have large amounts of fireworks, 25 pounds or more. So, there's some very real potential to catch people with 25 pounds of illegal fireworks here. So, we very easily could advertise as part of our campaign that it's one to $5,000 fine for illegal fireworks, and that I think would really be a strong deterrent. So, I want you to think about all those things, a holistic approach, all those extra details, which I think might really, we got a handle on the illegal fireworks, but we all know what a pain in the butt that is, and in the ear, and just cause a lot of distress. And we'd like to see some real, real success in that, and maybe make Fourth of July a little bit more fun for everybody. Thank you.
And Dennis Ravel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Dennis Ravel, President of Ravel Communications. I'm half of our client TNT Fireworks. I too would like to applaud not only Chief Tassa's efforts, but Councilmember O'Neill's and the community members who served on the task force, particularly Cindy and Chris. They all not only contributed in terms of their time, but in terms of their ideas, focus, and concern about this community. I think a couple of things I'd like to clarify and agree with the chief on, and that is, it is a year transition. As Councilmember O'Neill, I'm sure you could share with you, we did spend the inordinate amount of time in the task force dealing with the beach, and didn't get to or have sufficient time with, given our timetable, all the other issues. In terms of the costs that have been outlined, I think I have a couple of comments and a couple of suggestions. Number one, as the last speaker pointed out, it doesn't take into consideration the probable $18,000 worth of fines. It also doesn't take into consideration the almost $12,000 in fees that were generated and imposed, and the almost $5,000 in sales tax that was generated for the city. Taking all of those considerations and all those income strings into consideration, not counting the fees, you are at virtually a balanced budget with what it costs the city. Having said that, when the little time that the task force did spend on costs, we never got to or heard from the fire department in terms of any projected increase in costs, and I don't think any of us expected there to be the additional $6,000. When you look at those costs, you have some fire personnel working 24-hour shifts at an average of $110 an hour. We clearly, I think if, if the task force can solicit and get a pre-ot plan from both police and fire, bring that to the council in advance, so everyone has a clear understanding of what the cost will be, I think that will be better for everyone. In terms of Mayor Protam's question about the higher volume of calls, TNT Fireworks at least engaged in even an increased level of public education. We have found historically, the more public education we do, the more calls that are generated. And so, it's to be expected that that will increase, because people then expect, with that increased level of public education, that the governmental process is going to do something to rectify the situation. Last but not least, in terms of the social host provision, the ordinance, in the last task force, we recommended that, and Chief Saunders, I think, recommended that.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but you're done. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Okay. Anyone else? See, no one, I'm gonna bring it back to council. And I have a light. Councilmember Stone.
Sure. Just wanted to say, I agree with a lot of the comments from council and the public, appreciate the process. I do just wanna add to Mayor Protam Ervin's point, before we, I'd like to ask the chief, before we go forward with the plan for the Fourth of July in particular, that you do have a conversation with the merchants, or is it particular the lighthouse and NICS, 'cause they really had a problem with the parking. It was mentioned that that was a very beautiful, warm day, and so, there was a lot of traffic. But if you could take their input, that would be much appreciated, and I think it would go a long way for the relationship and also the end product, which I think we're all going for. Thank you.
And if I could just comment on that, please. There was an issue with the parking lot at NICS, and in regards to that, in previous years, NIC had typically staffed the entrance to that lot and controlled that traffic into the parking lot. This particular year, there wasn't staffing out there by NICS. So, once we were alerted of the issue, we immediately staffed somebody down there to deal with the issues. I just wanna make sure that we all had that information. And this, just in closing, I wanna thank, you know, this goes back to when the task force committee started in part, and then leads up to the event of the day. But all of the task force committee members, you know, no matter what side of the fence they were coming from, you know, we had a great group of people there. They all provided phenomenal information, and while there were some challenges, and we started additionally at, you know, very different ends as a group, everybody was very professional, and they were willing to compromise, if you will. And we came to a resolution that we thought would make for a continuance of the ability to sell the Safe and Sane, while at the same point, same time, trying to make an impact on the litter issue that was going on in the community. So, I just wanna, it wasn't just myself and a couple of members, it was the entire group of people that worked well together, and we had great support from the other city departments, you know, especially the Public Works Department, and the fire department is always cooperative with our efforts. So, it was the entire group that helped make this as successful, you know, as we can say. And there were issues, and we knew that going in, that there may be issues in a year transition. So, I think for the most part, it went well. You know, we have some things that we can address this year as we go forward. You know, we have a litter message that we wanna get out there. You know, one of the ideas, just to kinda give you an idea of something that we're looking at, is it's not just for the Fourth of July, just, this is a community litter issue, that message that we wanna get out there. So, people are thinking about litter year-round, and not just the Fourth of July. So, you know, help us be a litter-free community. You know, is that something that we maybe wanna adopt? And as we go forward, we'll continue to talk about the ideas on a way to get that message out to the community, and try to make it a little bit better as we go forward.
I would encourage working with the beautification, because we've been talking for some time about Keep Pacifica Beautiful. I mean, some kind of campaign along those same lines, so I would suggest working with the beautification task force. I just had a question about the numbers. When I look at this, the 34,000 is obviously the 8% in safety fee, but we also get 38,000. We don't get all of that. We get 1% of that. Am I correct? The 38,000, 48 in sales tax? Yeah. So, we get about, what, 300?
3,600.
3,600? Okay. And then you add in the 6,000, the use fee? We do get that?
Credit card use fee?
Well, I don't know. No, that's a credit card use fee. We don't get that. We get the permits. Where is that?
License and permit.
Oh, there it is, on the front one, the 800. Okay. So, we get a little bit more, but it still doesn't quite cover. Yeah. All right. That's what I want.
The license and permits is actually 1,600?
Yeah. I see it. I also wanted to say, well, it's actually, the licensing's and permits is 12,000, right?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah.
Right, 12,000.
So, we get a little bit more than that, and maybe closer to a wash, but not, there's a lot of factors in here. I did wanna underscore the issue with parking at the beaches, and that issue was really brought home in Rockaway, because folks were surprised. But I think we have to kinda work with our businesses in, not just Rockaway, but in Lindemar too, that might be impacted in some way by pushing more people out of the parking lots and into the streets. So, we probably should take that into account. We probably should expand the litter campaign. And, you know, that social ordinance doesn't sound so bad either. I'm looking for, does the staff want council to give direction on this at this point tonight?
If you'd like us to change any of the practices that we reported on, tonight is the time to tell us that.
Okay. Councilmember Ervin.
I just had a question regarding the social host ordinance, and just, so currently, there's a $1,000 fine, correct, if you find anybody? So, how would the social ordinance be different than the current fine that you get now? What, is it primarily, so for instance, if you go to an area and you know that illegal fireworks have gone off, can you actually find somebody, or what does it take for you to actually give that $1,000 fine? And how is the social ordinance going to be different?
And from a legal perspective, that is something that we will have to research and get some feedback from the city attorney's office as we develop that ordinance. That ordinance is not currently developed. We've done a little preliminary work on it already. Captain Spanheimer's done some research in regards to it. So, if it was an ordinance that we felt had some, you know, some backing, some support to, where we could go after the individuals, the fine process would be the same. It's just a different violation, if you will. So, it'd be the same $1,000 fine, and it's a, it's a city ordinance versus a penal code violation. So, it would be dealt with internally here within the city through an administrative hearing, rather than somebody going to the courts of San Mateo County.
And, and then, just if you could give a little feedback in terms of the other idea, which was a reward for people that turned in or called and told about illegal fireworks going on, how do you feel about that proposition? Like, does that typically work on the rewards? And are we concerned at all about people calling up on people because they're angry with them for some other reason?
You know, the way that I would envision something like that working is, I think we would attach to it that if they're gonna call and complain on a home or an individual, that the reward would be tied to a conviction, if you will? Not just a random saying, this person's doing it, and we go out there and we determine they are or they aren't, but we'd have to have a follow-through on that. We'd have to talk about the possibility of having the person that's reporting it possibly willing to come in and testify in regards to that. Would that be part of it or not? We'd have to talk about that. That may decrease people willing to come forward. We could do it without that and go specifically on the reporting. We could have their information, the reporting party's information, and then if we went to the site and were able to issue a complaint, and then the follow-through, we receive the fine as a result of that, then we could go back and give the reward to the person that reported it. So, it'd just be a matter of tracking that information for us.
And then, one other quick question. If we were to put in place a social ordinance, is there a cost to that, that we need to be considering?
I think initially, there's gonna be a, a significant, well, not a significant, there's gonna be a cost. It's gonna take staff time to research the ordinance, to put the ordinance together, have the city attorney's office review it. So, you're gonna have the staff time, the costs that go along with that, and that is gonna involve some time. And then, each time that the, you issue a violation, there's gonna be a hearing in all likelihood. So, there's gonna be staff time involved, involved again, when you have those hearings, because typically, somebody from the city sits on that, that hearing, and then you have the personnel, i.e. the officer that issued the violation, has to respond and testify in regards to that, that violation. So, there are some ongoing costs as a result of that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember DeGruy. Oh, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add that Chief Tassa is correct, that the city attorney's office has not reviewed even the concept of creating an ordinance like that. So, that, if that is the direction of the council, that we are initially going to review whether or not we can even create an enforceable ordinance. If it's our, if it's the city attorney's opinion that we cannot, then, you know, we will inform you of that, but there are gonna be costs involved with just investigating.
Right. You know?
I do wanna remind everybody that even the social host ordinance that we have, that came in a pretty good package, I was involved in that, but that took just about a year and a half, almost two years. So, we're not looking at anything that's gonna impact 2014 anyway, if we wanna move forward on it. On the other hand, some of these other suggestions will. So, Councilmember DeGruy, and then Councilmember Stone.
Right. It seems to me, I do remember that discussion regarding alcohol, and I was thinking that it wouldn't hurt, depending on staff time, and as you say, it's a couple of years, to compare it, to see if it would be worth doing. We don't like the idea, and we talked about that then too, that we don't really like the idea of picking on people, or snooping, or snitching on people, but it seems that the alcohol plan is working, so I think that's worth it. Now, the beach we're talking about is Lindemar, where we have paid parking, correct? Is that the one we're talking about?
Lindemar and Rockaway.
At Rockaway, we don't have paid parking.
No.
So, I think that, do we wanna, you know, trade off the paid parking at that time? Personally, I think that if somebody feels their car is gonna get towed, and they have ample notification of that, that's a risk I don't think they would take. I mean, I got towed by accident one time, and it was, I'd never wanna get in that position again. You don't forget that. So, I would be concerned about closing off paid parking. I prefer, I believe, to have good, good marketing and, you know, hopefully it won't.
It would be very similar to something like the Fog Fest. In order to be able to tow it, we just need to make sure that we place 72-hour notice out there. You know, typically, we do that on barricades with the signs saying, parking lot will be closed at four o'clock on that particular day, let's say. Between four and midnight, or whatever hours we wanna designate. So, that's something that, you know, we could definitely look at doing. Again, the first year will always be a year transition, I think, on most things. So, you know, hopefully, we'll have good compliance, and there may be a tow or two, but it's definitely something that could probably be doable.
I think that what we're, what we're seeing with the alcohol ordinance too, is probably a change in behaviors, in that when people that wanna have a party really don't wanna have things out of order, when guests come with this type of a thing, and it seems that it does show, we give a little does show, give a little more impetus to say, don't mess up my party by bringing illegal things. The other thing is, I've noticed that when we travel, we go through any city where there's a sign along the road that says, please keep our community beautiful, it really does have an effect, that these people care and they're asking us to support it. So I'd definitely like that.
And I think the other thing that you have to keep in perspective is that I would envision, if a social host fireworks ordinance were in place, that it would have more of a zero tolerance versus a social host party ordinance. Typically, on the social host party ordinances, the police department will go out there, make contact, and try to get compliance the first time around, unless it's completely out of control, at which time we may issue a violation on our first call there. Typically, we get very good cooperation and we don't have to go back and the issue is abated. But there have been times where we've gone back a second time and issued the violations. So I would envision those ordinances being enforced a little bit differently in that with the fireworks, we would probably want to have more of a zero tolerance impact.
So just to make sure we're giving some feedback here, and so I'm hearing some consensus on a difference in terms of parking signage, towing, but leaving it open during the day. Am I? Councilmember Stone.
I just wanted to come in, kind of bring some perspective on this. So as the staff report says, that we put, or we formed the committee just shortly before July last year. And so, and the committee, I think, did a great job in providing some recommendations, which are great. And now, it's just about evaluating those. This is very new, or this is a very, it's a new process for us, like the chief mentioned a couple of times. So this is, I think, it will mature. So for me, at this point, my perspective is, is to let the committee evaluate last year and go forward and see if there's any other recommendation that they should bring to us, as opposed to us changing what the charge was. That's my perspective. I think the current charge sounds great, in that we would go forward and just hear back from the perspective of the committee. And, you know, Councilmember O'Neal, of course, can report back to us as things go along, if you want feedback. So if my colleagues appreciate it, I'd be happy to make a motion if that's needed from...
Just to bring note that the committee has sunsetted, so the committee is no longer in existence. So...
I was going to ask, actually, if we could reinstate the committee to, and particularly with the advertising and those sorts of things, the campaign out there, evaluating it and moving forward with this share, I think that's a good idea. And then the parking differences. Councilmember O'Neal?
If I remember right, I think there are a couple out there, but I think the committee was kind of willing to come back and evaluate last year for this year, if I remember correctly. In regards to the social ordinance, I just want to be sure I'm clear on something with the chief here. The existing social ordinance, you get a complaint from somebody, the officers drive up, they can probably still hear the noise, right? From the party or whatever it's called. But with the fireworks, my understanding is, right now, in order to issue a citation, they have to actually see the firework take off from the backyard. Am I correct?
No.
Okay, so, okay, so we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just to give you clarification, for us to issue a citation now, we have to actually see an individual lighting the firework.
Okay.
So basically...
So now, if we enact a social ordinance, that's changing that house left, let a firework off, correct? So it's a big difference in how people perceive it. Am I correct in that?
That would be our goal, again, it would be something that we'd have to look at as we look at developing the ordinance, if it's legally possible to do that. But the idea behind it would be exactly what you're saying, that we would get a report of a specific area or residence. We would go to that area and then we would wait to see if we see something coming from a specific location that we can specifically identify, it came from this yard. And then based on our visual observation of the yard that, or the residence that it came from, versus the individual lighting it, which is more specific, if you will, we would go based on that.
I think it's worth reestablishing the committee, having them evaluate this and the feedback we've had, and then coming back to us with, like, this issue, any other issue, if they want to see us pursue it. Is that what I'm hearing from the rest of the council, just to move this forward, to give staff some direction? So we'll have to do a resolution to reestablish that committee and all that stuff?
And with the, since I was not here back then, is the purpose of that committee the same as previously adopted? So in other words, we'd just be bringing back the same purpose?
I don't think so.
Roughly, but not, from my recollection of it, and I would go to Councilmember, I would defer to Councilmember O'Neal on it, but to add some pretty specific objectives about evaluating how this worked, taking the feedback from the council right now, and then asking for specific recommendations to improve our approach for this 2014. That's about all you're going to get between now and 2014, is a couple of meetings, you know?
I'm very well aware. So I just want to be clear that we're going to be able to deliver back to what you're hoping for. And so what I...
Does that sound right for the council?
Parking lot management.
Do you want them to meet?
I was just listening to the city managers' preview of what we were talking about.
What I heard you talk about was the parking lot management, you want us to look at that. The litter campaign, you like that idea, you'd like us to look more closely at that with the committee. And then the social host fireworks ordinance, you'd like a little bit more information about what that might take?
Perfect.
Okay.
Did you want us to look at the fees?
I think that makes perfect sense. You know, just...
I'm just, you know, since I'm going to be on it, I want to know what I need to do.
Okay.
We'd be happy to come back with information about the fees as well. I'm being advised by the city attorney that if you are interested in the social host fireworks ordinance, that that might be something best for the staff to pursue, because the attorney can then advise staff in a better way than the committee. We can come back to you on that separately.
That sounds perfect. And we don't have to take action on this, we're just giving you some direction. Okay. Do you have something?
No.
Okay. Then, I think that's it. Thank you to the committee members that are here and the rest of the committee. Thank you, Chief. And thank you, Councilmember O'Neal. All right, moving on to item 15, which is the feedback on the dog management plan. It is a management plan by Golden Gate Recreation area, not by the City of Pacifica. We're just doing feedback for the supplemental environmental impact report. So, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you went for your considerations, a draft letter prepared by staff from the council to the GGNRA relating...
Hang on just a second. Okay, thank you. Just so everybody quietly leaves. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you went for your considerations, a draft letter prepared by staff from the council to the GGNRA relating to their dog management plan on GGNRA lands in Pacifica. The letter incorporates comments and recommendations from the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, as well as additional public input gathered at a joint city council and open space and parkland advisory committee study session held on January 29th. The council had previously sent a comment letter on May 24, 2011, relating to the initial draft EIS for dog management. Subsequently, a supplemental environmental impact statement was prepared and the comment period was extended. That comment period now is on Tuesday, February 18th. It should also be noted that this draft letter was reviewed by the chair and co-chair of the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. Thank you. And if council has any comments or questions?
So, some of the, because I was just reading through this, I just wanted to ask you, Lee, most of the letters stayed the same, except there are a couple additions from comments that we made in the study session? Is that correct?
That is correct. So there were some modifications, yeah, to the letter.
Could you point out just those modifications for council, so that we can see that those were made, or do you know?
Some of the slight changes were made specifically for the sites in Pacifica, like Sweeney Ridge, Maury Point, Peter Point.
Right. Because we gave feedback about specific trails that we wanted to see available?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Questions from council? None? Okay, I have one card, Jerry Flynn.
First of all, excuse me if I start beeping, I have an insulin pump who's mad at me right now, so I can start beeping at any moment. But I just wanted to, I'm a little surprised, and I couldn't find this letter anywhere online. Is it someplace online?
It's in the staff report.
I looked through the staff report, but I couldn't find it. Maybe it is there, I'm really bad with the internet. But I was on the negotiating rulemaking committee for the GGNRA for about two years, well, the whole time it existed, representing Pacifica. And I'm just sort of surprised, nobody asked for me to take a look at it, since I was there through all the arguments. And I just have a couple of comments. Hopefully, you got some pro off-leash dog walking into your comments, since they say in their report, they want diversities of locations for off-leash dog. And I think you all know, all of San Mateo has zero. And we don't have much anywhere else either. All we have is our hard-to-reach beach and a hard-to-reach park in San Mateo County. Another thing I wanted to make sure was addressed, that they would never even address in any of their meetings, although I brought it up over and over and over again, is considering handicap people. People like me, who can't walk without a cane, certainly can't walk with, holding a dog on a leash. For me to go out and walk my dog anywhere, I need off-leash areas. And a lot more diabetics in the world right now, who are going to be like me, with neurological problems in their feet, where they can't feel the ground, we should be an important consideration. And finally, since I don't have much time, I think on a lot of the things, the environmental, as an environmentalist, too, starting the Pacifica Beach Coalition and running it for 10 years, I am an environmentalist, but I am also a dog lover, and I see where many mitigations could be made to make the trails safe for wildlife and still let people walk off-leash. If you give people nowhere to go, as I think we probably find out, they will go everywhere. And there are places I would not like dogs to be, but I think there are many places in our GGNRA area where dogs could be and cause minimal impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seen no one. I'm going to bring it back to council. I do want to say, just for the public in general, the feedback that was given by both our Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee and in the study session itself, really was a balance, and I appreciated that. I appreciated the work of the committee, and I appreciated the work of staff. The addition of trails to form loops, to make sure that we had access, so that people could not just go in and out, but would go around, I think is quite useful. And I am heartened to see that we had representatives, representative from GGNRA here at our study session. I'm also heartened, because on the first environmental impact report, they actually did take many of our suggestions. And so I'm hopeful they'll take these final few. But this has been going on, as Jerry Flynn just pointed out, for a number of years. So this isn't, this is just our final kind of words of feedback. So with that, Councilmember Stone?
Just wanted to make a motion to authorize staff to send the final version of the letter to GGNRA.
Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, I just want to, again, extend...
We need a second before...
Oh, a second.
Okay.
I just want to extend my appreciation of all the work that the Open Space and GGNRA committee did. They worked very hard, and they thought very hard in terms of what the best solutions were. And I'm very grateful for the changes that we made. And also, I just want to thank Jerry Flynn for speaking right now. You just brought up some incredibly valid points, and I really sincerely hope that they take those into consideration as well. It makes absolute perfect sense, what you're saying. And I tend to agree as well, that I think we're facing a somewhat unsustainable situation with no off-leash dog access in the entire San Mateo County, in the GGNRA surrounding areas. And I just think, you know, there are so many people that don't have the ability to run their dogs, although they have athletic dogs that need to be run. And it's just, there are no places to go. And as Jerry spoke so eloquently, they're going to be ending up going everywhere. And unfortunately, that is something we're all going to have to contend with as we move forward. But again, I appreciate your input, Jerry.
And Councilmember DeGruy.
Just so Jerry and others know, our representative from GGNRA at our January meeting did mention that the park is absolutely concerned about people who have disability, handicaps of any kind.
Okay, with that, I just discovered that, because you put both letters in here, that I was mayor last time we provided feedback on this, so this has been going on for a while. Jerry is absolutely correct about that. So with that, I'm going to call the question, and please vote. And that passes five to zero. We have one final item on our agenda, and that's item number 12, that we pulled from the consent calendar. That is the addition of, or the change of title, actually, and position for the assistant city manager. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and city council member. I brought forward to you tonight a request to create a new position for Pacifica, that of assistant city manager, to better meet our needs and to fill that position, that vacancy, and leave another one that is currently vacant, that of the administrative services director, as a better way of meeting the city's needs. Some of the information in the report that I provided, there's a number of duties, responsibilities, activities, that a person in that higher-level position will be able to handle, and therefore free up some time for me to be actually working on a number of things that you all have articulated that you want me to do. Things like improve the transparency, increase, or improve the image of the city, improve staff morale, increase the, improve the communication around our budget and our finances with the community. All of those things take time and energy that I think that this is the better way of freeing up that time and energy, by allowing me to have somebody who can then sort of help me in a way that is currently not available to me. So I'm making the recommendation to you tonight to allow me to establish this position and fill it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So basically, you're taking the previous finance director position in HR, finance, and changing it into an assistant city manager that actually does some specialty in HR and finance. It's FTE-neutral.
Yes, it is.
And with our vacant positions... And with our vacant positions, I mean, your budget doesn't change, so your budget stays limited.
It's true, for currently this budget year, as you're probably aware, we have enough staff vacancies, that we expect to have some savings at the end of the fiscal year. On an annual basis, what this would mean would be an increase of about $20,000. So from my vantage point, an investment of $20,000 to gain this greater staff capacity seems like a good way of leveraging the city's resources.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Councilmember Urban?
So I just was clarifying, that there is no future intent to fill the Finance Director position, this is something that would remain vacant.
That is my expectation, yes.
So financially, it's not costing us a highly significant amount. Maybe the estimate was between $15,000 and $18,000, I think, a year, or something like that.
It's roughly $20,000 a year.
Okay. Great, that's excellent.
And I had one card on this issue, if I see no other council questions, but it was Tree Steyer, and I believe she has left. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council, and I'd like to suggest that, you know, this was a call for me, we're about policy, and you're about running the city, and I'm saying this to our city manager, and I'm inclined to, especially given the struggles that you are facing right now, with limited staff, limited resources, et cetera, using it, trusting your judgment, and using it the most efficient manner possible. And it was kind of a call, if it hadn't been on that edge, I wouldn't have consented to pull it, because it really is kind of technically running the city, and that's your purview, particularly since it wasn't going to change your total budget for department. With that, Councilmember Stone.
I just want to wholeheartedly second your comments right there, and make a motion that we adopt a resolution establishing the position description and salary range for Assistant City Manager, and authorize the city manager to move forward with filling the position.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember DeGry?
And I just want to make a comment.
Okay.
I actually like the plan, it sounds like we will be able to get a lot done and move forward quickly. Thank you.
I have a small addition in terms of the wording. If you could adopt the resolution that takes those actions, that would be more specific.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make her the motion.
Didn't I say that?
You didn't say adopt resolution, the city attorney actually caught that, so...
Oh, that's, okay.
I thought you said...
Can I make a motion as amended?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Second.
Okay, with that, please vote. And that passes five to zero. And before we close the meeting, I have one question, the city manager that occurred to me, or the city attorney, that occurred to me. On the consent calendar is the bids, the closed bids for Palmetto. I cannot vote on that piece of the consent calendar, do we need to re-vote? And I state that. How do we pull back? Yeah, I just realized that it was in there.
A reconsideration on that item on the consent...
Just to clean it up, sorry.
Clean it up, all right. So can somebody who voted in the majority, which I believe you all did, just make a motion to reconsider that item? And then we need a second.
Okay.
And you should not participate.
I can participate on everything with a consent calendar, except for that.
Yeah, no, but they're going to make a motion to reconsider that...
Ah, and I won't participate in that, got it. Councilmember Urban.
Make a motion to reconsider item number, and I'm just looking at which item number it was.
It is on the consent calendar.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Right.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Please vote.
Let Karen lead the meeting.
Oh, let Karen lead the meeting, even.
Not participate.
Not participate. It's so hard.
Actually, should, should recite your conflict, and then remove yourself...
There we go, I can even remove myself.
Good God.
You have this down yet?
That one, wow.
Well, I've never come back to it in the end of the meeting. So my conflict is that I live within 500 feet of Palmetto, God forbid.
All right. Please vote, after she leaves the room, I guess.
Passes four to zero.
So now, you're going to reconsider the item, so now you need to vote on the item again.
Okay, so now we're going to re...
Now we need a motion to approve item 11.
Okay, now we need a motion to approve item 11?
I'll make a motion for the, is it just item 11?
Approve, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Just item 11, make a motion.
Second.
We need a second.
We need a second? Can I?
Second, a second.
All right, let's vote.
Four to zero.
Okay. Now it's good night. Thank you, everybody.
But you're in the meeting.
I just realized I needed to clean that up.